Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this ninth day of September 2024. I'd like to welcome our guests. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We have made provisions for folks on council to join us via phone if they have illness. And of course, Wayne's a little under the weather and Councilman Shaw had knee replacement surgery. So keep both of them in your prayers for recovery and of course Wayne for better health. And we'll get this meeting started. First item on the agenda tonight is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on August 26th of 2024.
Wait, read.
Okay, council, we got a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your pack? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Annabeth, anybody else sign up wanting to speak tonight?
No.
Okay. With no public comment, we'll move right on to the next agenda. The next agenda item is a proclamation for supporting the Nicholas County Board of Education Student Attendance Awareness Month, which is the month of September. And tonight, we're excited to have in council with us the Director of Attendance and Student Services, Mike Williams, and our School Board President, Chip Prime. Welcome, guys. At this time, I don't know if you're both speaking, or Mike, I know you are, okay? So Mike, if you take the podium and you've got a few words to say before we do the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having us here this evening. I do want to thank Mr. Prime for being with me. Do want to mention that Superintendent Beam was planning on being here. He is also ill this evening, and he does apologize and says that he hopes to be with you within the coming months. Also, our school social worker who helps me tremendously, Elizabeth Bragg, was planning on being here as well, and she's also sick. So I appreciate you having us and wanted to speak briefly to you about some chronic absenteeism issues that not only the school district is facing, but the state and the nation. One of the issues that we have had is with attendance. And one of the things that the state and the legislature is starting to recognize is chronic absenteeism instead of truancy. In the past, I've dealt a lot for years with truancy. I was within the court system for a number of years, and we overseen those students that was adjudicated as truant and was placed on probation. And I am the one now that files the criminal complaints against parents in magistrate court for attendance issues with their students, as well as juvenile petitions in circuit court for truancy issues. And so one of the things that what we're trying to do is just get a shift in mindset for parents. A lot of times, we would look at just truancy. And basically, what chronic absenteeism is, is looking at absences, both excused absences, unexcused absences, and suspensions. Because if you're not in the seat, whether it's excused or unexcused, you're losing valuable instructional time. A lot of times, the teachers get upset because they're having to repeat subjects or that they've already taught. Some of the students that were in attendance are hearing a repeat two and three times of the same instructional matter. And then the ones that's not at school is losing that instructional time and is just having problems learning and having problems with attendance and academics. So what we've done is we've, within Nicholas County, we've developed an attendance slogan, and it's called, and I gave each one of you one of these magnets that we've handed out to 4,000, about 4,000 students, and it's Attendance Matters, Nine Days or Less for School Success. And so what we're trying to do is encourage parents, grandparents, guardians, the importance of school attendance. If you'll notice on the left-hand column in a school year, zero to nine days absent, that's really good attendance, and then it goes on down. Right now, students attend school 180 days, which is approximately six months. And so 18 days, if they're, 18 or more 10% of the school year, they're considered chronically absent. Within the state, last year, we had, depending on the district, we had anywhere between 26 and 33% chronic absenteeism per district. So one in three students was missing 18 or more days of school. That's a real big problem. And so within Nicholas County, we had, our rate was around 27%. And so what we're trying to do is we've got banners in each school with our slogan. We have, we have these magnets. We've had, and the mayor was a part of this, we had a panel discussion, and there was folks there ranging from Dr. Tom Show, Dr. Stewart, probation, county commissioners, both mayors of both municipalities, Mr. Beam, Mr. Prime, myself, and especially a student. We had a student there to discuss attendance and the importance of attending school, some of the problems, and how to correct those problems. So one of the things that Mayor Schaefer done is stepped up and said, hey, the town has in the past, and will continue to sponsor schools, will help out any way that we can to get the word out. And so we appreciate that, and we appreciate you all's time with this proclamation. Be happy to answer or try to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, this is, this is a win-win for us as a city. You know, being on that panel, I learned so much. And I will tell everybody that in a real positive way, it was videoed so that the board could continue to use it in their system, and then also it's going to play on SCTV. But it was just absolutely, I went away that day not even having an idea. And then when they don't, when they don't attend school, it's such a predictor of their activities later in life. It's unreal. And I mean, you think about it, one in four kids misses school every day in Nicholas County. And that's not a Board of Education problem, it's a community problem. And with collaboration and partnership, because I think before, we always looked at those kind of issues and said, boy, the board's got issues. No, they don't. We do as a community. And so what this is a part of, and of course, joining you and partnering with you, as we do in many things, you know, this is an area that needs incredible attention because, as we all know, you know, it's all relative to the workforce later in life. And, and you know, I think things, you know, being educated that night on numbers, I think that, you know, a lot of it is fallout from the pandemic and the way we educated people and they stayed home, and even with the workforce, the way the workforce got to stay home and get paid. And so this is a real crisis because this is where we've got to pay attention if we're going to make real serious impact on not only those kids' future, regardless of where they end up in life, but in our community.
And I think you're exactly right, Mayor. And we've talked to businesses and organizations, you're all seeing this as businessmen, is they're coming up to us now and saying, hey, we're having difficulties with our employees that we hire showing up late to work, not showing up at all, thinking they can leave early. And that's what we're seeing in schools, and we're trying to prevent that, which will in turn help the workforce in our, in our county.
What do you think?
Well, what we're trying to do, and the state's trying to do, is what's called a multi-tiered system of services or systems of support. It's trying, trying to put services, how can we help before it gets a problem? What we've heard is statistically, if a student misses two days of school within the first 20 days of instruction, they're at risk of being chronically absent. So what we have now is we have our social workers within our schools, school social workers, school counselors, psychologists, working to try to identify and talk to not only the student, but also to work with the family or the parent. We've got a lot of grandparents now and great-grandparents raising children, and it's difficult for them sometimes to get them to school, especially if they miss the school bus. So what we're trying to do is, is how can we assist you in getting your student to school? Trying to encourage, we're trying to change our school culture, our school climate to try to encourage students to attend. A lot of times, elementary school students, they enjoy coming to school. Once they're there, they really enjoy it. Middle and high school, it's a little bit different at times. They don't enjoy it as much.
Yeah. So I commend you, Chip, and the board, you, Mike, and superintendent, because, you know, it's really an education piece. And then, and then, you know, the kind of one of the parts I held on the panel was the business aspect of it. And we encourage our businesses to partner with the school system, and that doesn't always mean money. There are things that you could do as a business, not write a check, that you could partner with the school board to help this attendance issue. So I put a, put a note out there to all business, if you see this or read it in the Chronicle, to please reach out to the school system if you've got ideas and ways that you could partner with them to help with this attendance issue.
Thank you.
So with that said, let me read the proclamation, then Chip, I'd like to present it to you. Whereas good attendance is essential to students' achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates. Whereas chronic absenteeism, missing 10% or more of the school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, is a proven predictor, predictor, sorry, predictor, of academic trouble and dropout rates. Whereas chronic absenteeism predicts lower third grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventually dropout, it weakens our community and local economy. Whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particularly, to particular challenges and strengths in each community. Whereas chronic, chronic absences can be significantly reduced when everyone works together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from attending school. So therefore, let it be proclaimed that the City of Somersville does hereby recognize and proclaim the month of September as Attendance Awareness Month, and we hereby will commit to focusing and reducing chronic absenteeism to give our children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. It is witnessed here, and witnessed, therefore, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Somersville to be affixed to this proclamation on Monday, the eighth day of September 2024. Robert L. Schaefer, Mayor of the City of Somersville. You go, fine, sir. We're on your team. Mike, you get in here and stand in here behind us. You play a major role in this.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is approval of our general fund, proposed budget revision number two, and this is where we do our final carry forward with the budget. So let me talk about the revenue first. We had previously carried forward $1.1 million 83,734. We're adding an additional $1.3 million 60,336, bringing our total carry forward to $2.5 million 44,070. We're also carrying forward some grants that were asked from last year's budget, and funds weren't expended. So the $1,020,350 is for the stormwater project, bringing that total to $1,998,920. And then sidewalk project phase one, $438,570,000, and sidewalk project phase two, $540,000. We've also got some additional grant money we're adding to the budget. We previously had $2,100 of state grant funds. We're adding another $2,900 in the Potato Festival grant that we received from the state. We're adding $10,000 from a community art project grant that we were fortunate enough to get. And then, of course, the $29,100 for the Somersville Police Department Active Shooter Preparedness Grant that was given to the city by delegate toll. Other grants, we, we had previously had in the budget, $15,000, and in a real exciting way, I'm glad, I'm happy to see this, we're adding additional $30,000 to bring that line item to $45,000. As Columbia Forest Products grant, they have partnered with us in the roof replacement of the Somersville Fire Department. So that brings the total increase to $3,431,256. Now for spending that money. Council contributions, we're adding $35,000. We had $66,500 in there, and that's basically the grants that you've already given. We got an additional $35,000 for the airport. We're adding $30,000 unallocated, which is just money setting in, in the budget, in the event that there would be a council contribution before this budget years up. Code enforcement contractual, we had $7,000. We're adding the $35,000 as we have not moved on the Arbuckle property purchase yet, was in the previous budget. City Hall Personal Services, we had previously $265,000. We're adding the additional $40,000, bringing it to $305,000, and that's to the Consolidated Public Retirement Board correction, of which we took care of in the previous meeting. City Hall Contractual, $115,000. We're adding $10,000, and that's bringing that line item to $125,000, which is for the alarm system that's obsolete here in the building. We have to redo the fire alarm system. SCTV Personnel, previously was $64,000. We're adding the additional $60,000, or $6,000, boy, he'd like $60,000. And that was the, the monies that I had previously talked to you about the change in scope of job for Sam Young. Then on SCTV Contractual, was previously $50,000. We're adding additional $4,000 for increased programming and videographer pay increases. In the Police Department Personal Services, we had $1,702,000. We're adding $17,000, and again, that was an issue that we handled at the last meeting that was the Consolidated Public Retirement Board correction. Police Contractual, we had $142,000. We're adding $15,000 for additional training costs. Police Commodities was $100,000. We're adding the $29,100 to bring that line item to $129,100, and that was the Active Shooter Preparedness Grant that we received. Police Confiscated Property, that account has been reconciled at the end of the last fiscal year. We previously had brought forward $30,500. We're adding another $2,114. The Somersville Volunteer Fire Department Contractual was previously $275,000. We're adding $5,000 to bring that line item to $400,000, and that's because of increased call payout. And then, of course, there's the $120,000 that were as an expenditure to replace the roof at the fire station. Street Contractuals, $440,000. We're adding $6,000, and that's to paint the utility maintenance building down in the city, city compound. We're adding the 100, this is where we add the $1,020,350 for the stormwater project, $7,000 for the sidewalk project phase one. We don't know exactly what that dollar amount's going to come in, but I feel for sure the state's already stepped up and said with the adjustment in the invoice that we're going to see because of the changes to the current project that's underway, they've secured funding that it'll be an 80-20 match. So I've done the best I could to guess that our match would not be more than $7,000 bucks, the 20% for the, for the additional invoice we'll receive on that sidewalk. And then this is where we carry forward the sidewalk monies. $438,570 for sidewalk project phase one. Those are monies we have not expended. $30,900 for sidewalk project additional phase two engineering, and $135,000 for sidewalk project phase two construction match. And then, of course, the $540,000, that's the sidewalk project phase two construction. And then street commodities, we have $150,000 previously. We're adding $16,598 to bring that to $166,598. Street Department Capital Outlay, we previously had $20,000. We're adding $12,000 for a Gravely mower. We're adding, adding $70,000 for a tractor with a brush hog. And as of right now, because we don't really officially have our Parks and Rec setup, that tractor's being purchased to handle the 128-acre maintenance of that property that we're going to have to do. And even when constructions start, there's still going to be a lot of mowing and whatnot that has to be done out there. As of course, before, we leaned on other folks to help us do that. So we're purchasing our own tractor with a brush hog. $5,000 is for a snowbox attachment for a plow. The central garage contractual, we're increasing it $5,000, bringing that total budget line item to $35,000. Parks and Recreation Contractual, we previously had $334,000 sitting in that budget. We're adding an additional $300,000, bringing that total to $640,624. And then, of course, the $6,624 for the visitor center of property survey that we've previously done. Fairs and festivals commodities, 163. We're adding $30,000 to that line item, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that comes in that budget. That's not all fairs and festivals. There's all kinds of activity that's in that. But we're adding $30,000 for additional city promotion costs. The youth center contractual, $30,000. We add $10,000 for the new gym floor annual maintenance cost. We are going to go ahead and initially sign a contract with the company that installed the floor to come back and do annual maintenance and, and, you know, working the floor, keeping it in as best quality as we can. So that's what that's for. Brown Oaks Contractual, we previously had $45,000. They had unexpended building expenses from '23, '24 on their current projects that we've approved. So we're carrying forward their unused $50,000 so they can complete those projects. And then the balance of all those funds, $400,000, we're setting in contingencies, bringing that line item to $400,000, and of course, those are unallocated funds. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moving.
We have a first and a second, okay? Any questions? Any, any questions or any discussion?
On your sidewalk project, the one and two, is that, is that going to be done by them?
So one's underway, and two has been, the funding's been approved, the project's basically been approved, the engineering. And we've elected to do the engineering separate, that's why you see project two, engineering. That engineering is a lot less than phase one, even though the sidewalk's going to be longer because initially, when we had it engineered in one, it was supposed to go farther than it could, but we had to back it off because of funding. So phase two is approved, and we've been, we've been approved the funding, and we're already in the round for phase three, and I feel real positive that we'll be awarded those funds as well for the third phase. So right now, this sidewalk, that's all this funding you see here will take us up to somewhere around the Young property that's on the other side of...
Bogus.
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 Bogus. Yeah, yeah. So, any other questions? Okay, we've got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Recorder's report.
Short this evening, Mayor. Got, just wanted to announce, put in front of you this evening, we had 11 new businesses in August, which is up by like four from last year. So I will go ahead and announce these. Bailey Tax and Bookkeeping, Lakewood Real Estate Service, Rock Lake Properties, P&amp;E Services, AQS Restaurant Equipment Repair, J.C. Bosley Construction, Katie's Cuts, Therapeutic Massage, Dancin' Height Service Company, Darwin Sanchez Morales, I believe that was roofing, and Regeneration Construction. So really good month. We could get 11 every month. That's fantastic. So real excited about that. Thanks to my staff here at City Hall and Joey for assisting on getting all these folks signed up. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Okay, council, I've got a relatively short marriage report. First of all, I want to, I want to salute, thank the Potato Festival Committee. I want to thank all you for attending, the ones of you that were, you know, the ones of you that made it or could make it, for attending the mayor's reception that I was absent from. But what another wonderful weekend. And I can't say enough about all the pieces that come together to make the weekend happen. And there are a lot of them. The list would be honestly a mile long, and I think that's the success of the festival is all the people that help. Of course, I do have to, as always, there's always a caboose behind the project, and that's my executive assistant, Mary Ann Taylor, who chairs that whole thing. And from a logistics standpoint, bringing all the committees together in the budget, I can't thank her enough for the work that she does on behalf of the city because that is our festival. So again, kudos to the committee, and I salute them and can't thank them enough for the work they do. Hydro plant study wrap-up meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, and this is basically on the national level. We're down to the, we're down to the wire on this. I submitted them a letter with a lot of questions on their draft of their report, and we're going to get the answers to our questions. And then, all intensive purposes, we do think that this will be the last meeting with this part of our study. I will tell you that I had the opportunity to be in a Zoom meeting with the ASA's office, which is the Assistant Secretary of the Army, and I did request a face-to-face meeting there because of some of the concerns that we have about the study and maybe some of the things that changed at the end of the study, which are really too complicated to get into right now. But I have been granted that meeting, so I will be going to the Assistant Secretary of the Army's office in DC with our team as soon as we get that meeting scheduled. And it's purposely happening, happening after our wrap-up meeting. I want to tell you, council, that we have partnered, the City of Somersville and Nicholas County Commission have partnered with the University of Charleston in an instructional classroom curriculum called Appalachian Collegiate Research Initiative. And the students will be here in the City of Somersville for the first time as a part of this class a week from today, Monday the 16th, at 12:30. We're going to have a lunch with them, and then, and then they'll start their, their research and the initiative that they're working on as a part of Appalachian. We're just tickled to death that we were selected to be, to partner with them. So we're bringing them in from Charleston to the City of Somersville. And then the other thing I'd like to highlight is, is that I would like to, in a real positive way, and I'll do it officially Wednesday morning, but we were fortunate enough to land the Brownfields statewide conference here in Somersville. And so I welcome everybody that's coming to the Brownfields Conference, and it starts Wednesday at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. And of course, I'll be there at 9:00 AM to officially welcome everybody that's here for the conference. So that's all I have, council. Any questions?
How did your meeting?
Oh, yes, it went, it went wonderful, and I'm prepared to maybe at the next meeting but kind of give a rundown. What I don't want to take away is, is that had a lot to do with partnering with education. Anyway, I just don't want to take away from the attendance thing with the Board of Education tonight because this is attendance month, so I purposely didn't bring. But it was a fantastic meeting, intense, but very, very well worth my attendance. Okay, any council reports? Okay, council, I do want to run into executive session real quick for, so I want to say, under the authority of West Virginia Code 6-9A4, and it's going to be for the legal personnel and deliberate matters. And Ray, there will not be anything reported on. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.